And Darcy, do you want to lead us? The first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda, so minutes and payroll and vouchers. And approve and sign an annual snow agreement. I will tell you about one voucher real quick that came in, just so you're aware. That voucher from Carquest that actually had three years worth of invoices on it. They apparently had a second account that they were putting some of the bills in and never realized it. That that was happening, got in touch with Trapper at one point because they finally got a note to him. I don't know how it came in, but that these bills were overdue, quote unquote. Well, they got looking and they are legit and they are signed for. But the voucher is about that thick and it's about thirteen thousand dollars worth of parts that they hadn't filled out over a three-year period. So that's. That's what we kind of thought too, is how can you go to previous fiscal years, but. I mean, they are owed and we did get the parts. That was proven, but still hopefully we don't have any. No, they did not charge any interest whatsoever. So thank goodness.
Moved to approve consent.
Then moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Shouldn't passes. Okay, with that, we will get an update from Clarion Associates for the land use plan.
It's great. Good morning, Commissioners. Glad to be back in Park County. We had our first meeting from this round last night. Up on the North Fork. So Commissioners Teal and Overfield were up there for us with us last night. We had, I think about forty people that were participating in the polling. So it wasn't a packed house, but it was a good crowd and I think overall. It went pretty well in terms of kind of the format and all of those things. So I'll touch on a couple of the highlights from that meeting as we go, but I think. Pretty short set of slides this morning. You'll be relieved to hear for once. But I think mainly just wanted to kind of get you guys in the loop in terms of next steps from here. We've essentially briefed you on everything that we're kind of covering this week and so wanted to focus on kind of where we go next. Essentially what we're talking about and working towards is, I'm gonna come back to this in a minute. Is, once we get through this round of meetings and we have a meeting every week or every night, sorry. I'm still drinking my coffee this morning. We have a meeting every evening this week and then we have midday meetings as well. In Matitzi and also in Clark on Thursday. So we have a lot of meetings yet to come this week. And then we're also going to be doing a virtual public meeting for folks who couldn't be here this week on the twelfth. So that's going to be the same format. So folks can do that and then we're going to have the online survey open through the end of the month. So essentially a full month period here that we're trying to gather input at this stage. So hopefully folks can find a way to, you know, share their ideas one way or the other. As we go through. And then in terms of kind of working towards the draft, which we're committed to getting a staff draft, an internal draft. That the board, planning commission, Loopac folks could kind of, and staff could look at by the end of the year. So I'll talk specific dates here in a moment, but for the next while, once we get through the October outreach. We're really going to be focused on, you know, what did we hear? You guys who were there last night got a taste of, in some cases, we have really clear direction. In other cases, you know, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. So we'll see how things shake out over the next few weeks. But I think so far, at least based on our small, you know, kind of segment. It was really interesting to see last night, you know, the way that we had structured the questions was sort of, you know, limited involvement to really proactive approach on the county's part. And we heard on ag, wildlife, wind and solar communication towers, and then growth management, all, you know, desire for proactive. Which was surprising, honestly. So that was interesting. You know, the details of that, you know, obviously we'll have to get shaken out in the draft plan. And we'll see what everybody else thinks, obviously, over the next few meetings. Housing and commercial, I think it was a little more mixed. And, you know, we'll have some head scratching to do to try to figure out exactly what it needs. In some cases, we heard, you know, wanting a limited involvement in terms of, you know, kind of housing. Mix in terms of what's happening, but then we heard we want the county to be more proactive in terms of addressing housing needs. And, you know, there's a lot of different ways that that can kind of shake out, but I think that was, that was a surprising response as well, I think. So, so yeah, some details to sort out there in terms of, you know, kind of how those things come together. But once we have the whole body of feedback assembled. By early November, we'll bring that back to the board and we can kind of talk about, you know, here's where we think we have. You know, clear direction from the community. Here's where we need you guys to really weigh in and say. If we're, if we're on the fence on something, you know, we'll need some direction from you. So I think these meetings with you over the next, you know. Three months or so are really going to shift from kind of, you know, more, less from an update and more of, we need your help. We need your direction on certain issues to kind of help get the plan to a place where it makes sense. So in late October, early November, we'll also be circling back to the Loopac. And our technical working group and we have met with the technical working group a few times over the summer. Couple of times over the summer. To get input on the suitability analysis and those types of things. So we'll have some pretty specific questions for them, I think. Loopac, I think we're meeting with them this afternoon and, you know, we had, I think, at least five folks there last night. I didn't get the actual count, but I, I think, you know, what we've really asked them to do is kind of be listening and, and, you know, kind of help us. Make sure that we're being responsive to the community's desires in the draft plan. So that will be the focus of the, the meetings with, with those folks. And then we have our next meeting with you on November first. So we won't have everything, kind of the full report assembled of the feedback, but we'll, we'll have been able to kind of process it. Partially to at least know kind of what we're thinking. The other thing that we're planning to do to make sure that when we do come back with a full draft, that we're in good shape is we're going to do. Call in annotated outlines. So just sort of a rough, you know, here's, here's what we're thinking, we're going to see in the draft. How it's going to be structured and, you know, kind of what the preliminary recommendations are. So you guys will get to see that. We'll, you know, check in with folks just to make sure that it's what you're expecting and. And that when we come back with the actual draft in December, we're as close to on track as we can be. You know, I think one thing, talking with Joy, your plan now is, is a fairly regulatory document. In terms, it kind of tries to be a regulatory document and as you guys know, the, the way that the statute is written, the plan is advisory. The regulations implement the plan. And so what we have discussed and, you know, kind of is typical. In comprehensive plans like this land use plans is that, you know, it's a, it's a should document, not a shall document. And so we're going to try to capture as much of the specifics that need to be embedded in the regulations. But, you know, our recommendation is not to have, you know, prohibit this or prohibit that embedded in your land use plan. Because if you don't actually have that in your regulations, it creates a false expectation that the county has control over that and you don't. And so you gotta, gotta have those things aligned. And so just wanted to kind of put that out there, make sure everybody. Kind of understands that. If you have a question, we can talk about it, but you know, that's, that's our recommendation is to kind of. Strip some of that regulatory language out of there, but, but still provide enough detail so that when we get. To the implementation strategies, you guys have clear direction about, you know, these are the types of. Regulations that the community is looking for, types of, you know. General categories of uses, if there are specifics about, you know, concerns about impacts. That we can address those in the plan more generally and then you can kind of embed those in your regs from there. So are there questions about that before we?
No, I think your, your discussion last night, you mentioned that there will be overarching. Thought processes countywide and then there'll be specific plan use areas, just like we have pretty much in the old one and that. So that's kind of staying.
Yep, absolutely. So that takes us through kind of the November timeframe and then once we get into December, we'll have an update with you on the sixth. And that will be just kind of a, at that point, I think, you know, check in on where we are. We're going to be delivering the draft plan on the ninth. And that will be the internal draft. But we may have some questions for you at that point as we've, you know. Talked in November and kind of gotten through the drafting process, we probably will have some outstanding questions that we'll want direction on. But from there, you'll have essentially a month to kind of work through the draft, get comments back to us. And then we'll turn around and revise that draft for the public later in January. So we already have dates on the calendar. For our third and final round of, of, of meetings like this outreach series. And that will be the week of January thirtieth to the second. And we're going to basically do the same structure in terms of number of meetings, online, all of the things that we've done this round. Next time, we'll see how the participation is at the different locations that we've laid out this time. And if we need to change it up next time to try something different, we'll do that. And, you know, I think it's kind of a wait and see, but we're, you know, trying to provide those, get out there as much as we can. But also make sure it's worth, you know, the, the time and energy and resources to kind of go to, go to those places. So we'll, we'll look for direction from you guys on that.
So the, the final round in January, February will be basically public, in-person public meetings in response to the draft plan. Of what the public thinks.
We're going to post it a week ahead of time so that.
Just a week? Is that ample time?
We, we can do more than, so we're trying to balance the, you know, timeline and, and kind of, you know, how long we have stuff out there. So in order to stick to the schedule we've laid out, that's what we have, but we're open to feedback on that.
And we're going through this exact scenario right now with, on a committee that I'm on. We worked years to put together a draft. And then we have one week to review it and then that's it. So, I mean, on our community. And it's very frustrating on our end and I can see that as the public. Went through all this and I haven't had time to really look at all of them. And I'm concerned that a week isn't enough or it's a pretty short time for the public to review the draft, to respond.
So let me, let me put that a little bit differently. So we're going to post it a week ahead of time. The meetings are really going to be to introduce the draft. Highlight the recommendations in each area and kind of, you know, lay it out. So people will still have kind of the same timeline, three weeks beyond the meetings to actually respond. So I guess we're not necessarily expecting that people will have, you know, actual answers for us at the meeting. But we're, we're open to your direction on that. I think, you know, again, it's a scheduling question. And if you think we need to build in more time, we're happy to do that.
Seems pretty short to me, if I were the public.
Well, I think if, as it says, they've still got outreach for that third to the seventeenth. So they've got a couple of weeks after being able to ask questions and they can still ask questions.
I know, I know there's the opportunity there, but it's just like up until this round. We've had ample opportunity for people to weigh in on surveys and everything. And all of a sudden. We finally get an in-person meeting to part of a lot of people. So this is the first thing they've had on a plan. And I know it isn't. I'm just saying that. It's not really a meeting unless you're invited to go there and then you can have these experts.
True.
Anyway.
Well, we can, we can try to do everything we can to enhance the notifications too. So that people know that it's out there with those public meetings specifically and then their follow-up abilities. So if we, you know, if we find that maybe Clarion's available a little bit earlier than that, we'll work with it. But if it's, if we need more, figure it out.
Yeah, and part of, I think we have, I mean, we have a window there to, you know, respond to comments from you all and staff and whatnot. And, you know, that's sort of a, if we need to do pretty major work on it. If we get to the sixth and we're in pretty good shape, we can post it sooner. So I think. Yeah, we'll, we'll look for direction from you guys as we get closer, I think. So depending on where, when that, if, you know, assuming we proceed with the tentative dates that we've laid out. We would have outreach through February. And then put together a final summary that we would take back to the board. So from there, we would work into our adoption draft. And so that would be the, the draft that you all and PZ would be considering. And so we would do our final update with the board, kind of in the draft mode on March seventh. And then, you know, at that point, you know, if we do hear from the community in February that we have concerns about this, you know, recommendation or that recommendation. That's where we would be asking for direction from you all too, to say, all right, what do we want to actually bring forward? Do we change anything based on what we've heard? So.
We also talked about a, an email back and forth with Joy that talked about a little bit more work with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm not sure where in this, whether it's in that first part in February or whether it's in this part that the commission actually kind of pulls it apart too.
And we, Joy and I talked a little bit about that yesterday and clarified, not necessarily more meetings with PZ, planning and zoning. You, you guys, yours is worded a little bit differently. It keeps tripping me up. I'm going to just say P and Z. So we think that it's important to share the annotated outline with them, with the preliminary recommendations, as well as the internal draft. And so Joy had suggested that she could, you know, we could share that with them, not necessarily have an extra meeting, but maybe dedicate some time at one of the regular meetings to talk about it. And get feedback to us on that. So we would definitely achieve that.
Joy.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, this next burst of information that's going out, we haven't really hammered down the logistics of all of that. I think you have to remember that you aren't going to have a public hearing where the, the community can tell you about what you feel about the plan. So this next round of meetings is for that help. Urge people to read the plan and, hey guys, here's a thirty thousand foot view of what's in the plan. And here's the overarching ideas that are being, you know, what you think about them. And then, hey, go off and read the plan, get us your comments so that by the time the adoption draft comes out. They will already have seen it and given comment and they have another opportunity to finally weigh in before you adopt it. So I, I hope that's clear. Like, I understand that it'll be a concern. I don't disagree with you that maybe that's a little bit short. We might have to figure something out. But I think we're almost kind of like Darcy said, we're introducing the plan to them and say, hey. Here's, here's what's in it. Here's what we're saying. Did you miss the mark or are we on the right track? And then that will help us crack the actual adoption, you know. And as far as P and Z is concerned, I, I anticipate that after they get the chance to read the draft materials. We will probably have an extended discussion with them at one of the regular meetings to get their input and see if they have anything else to add. You know, before we get into those final stages. That's how I'm imagining it.
Thank you.
All right. So, and as I think. To clarify what Joy said, I think in terms of adoption hearings right now, we're, we're kind of just leaving that. We'll see how this next round goes and we can pin that down. We've got to look at the notification requirements and all of that. So that will get sorted as we get closer. So that is really, I think, all we had on kind of the next steps in terms of overall process. Do you all have questions for us or concerns, anything you wanted to, to talk with us about while we're here?
No, I did receive one email from last night. See if I can bring it up it. And then, you know, visiting with people afterward, I think there was, you know, pros and mostly pros, one or two cons. This person said, sorry, they were a little negative last night. They were hungry. I'm like, okay. Hangry, there you go. I hope my comments were constructive, a little bit less stage talk. Legible slides. And I think part of that was the angle that, you know, like where we were sitting, it was hard to, to see those straight on or be able to read them just somewhat because of color.
That was, that was our fault. We took a projector screen, but it was so small. I didn't realize it was small. And so you could grab the wrong one or we don't have the right one.
Okay. Anyway, that was just one thing that was, that was mentioned. More time for public comment and questions, which I'm not sure where that comes from because you asked several times as we got to the end if there was any more comments or concern. So I'm, I thought you had quite a bit of public input from the discussion toward the end. Overall, and taken in context of my overall enthusiasm about the new land use plan that encompasses the current conditions and challenges. And also encourages supportive regulations. Thanks so much for the efforts. So, you know, I think it was good, you know, a little bit. The only place that I thought it went a little bit. I guess they were jumping you mad a little bit on the voting when we got to the solar wind and, and energy things. Because they were already three quarters of the way done voting when you were still explaining the three options. But I think in those three, they knew the options were the same. It's either, you know, handle it or, or don't. So they were already ahead of it, but that's the only place I saw it really jump.
Okay. Yeah. And I think we, we talked last night, I think we'll try to get, get, I think, first time out of the gate, we're probably a little long-winded. So I think we'll try to get through things a little bit more quickly. It seemed like people got the hang of it.
Oh, I think so.
I just want to say, I thought it went pretty good myself. Top of a couple of things from other than Darcy was, I feel there needs to be a clear, and, and you guys handled it very well. But a clearer definition between the land use plan for what we're doing and the natural resource. They were trying to bring in a lot more public, public land, where they choose. The access was one thing that they, this is hard. Once they finally got it, that we were specifically talking about private land is when they got that part. The other thing, and this is more kind of a personal thing, but I don't feel that it was completely alone. And that was when questions are asked, either make certain they have the microphone or as you answer it, repeat your question.
Yeah.
So that, because you would answer something, I'm not sure what the hell the question was. But that's.
That's good.
And I think we'll run into a few of those same concepts when we get to park and, you know, anybody coming in from the sunlight area. Some of those are going to be the same as far as the wildlife mitigation, some of that. So those explanations were good and especially after we cleared up that that wildlife map was elk. Because we know the deer habitat's a little bit different.
Yep. And I think, yeah, having the questions last night will help us just say those things upfront. So hopefully we can answer some of those without them having to ask. So, yeah, and we'll, we, we will continue to just pause throughout and, you know, let people weigh in. But I, I was surprised there weren't more people that wanted to elaborate on things.
Joy.
So we are collecting information on posters at these meetings as well, which two of you obviously saw. But every planning area has the opportunity to weigh in on the specific uses in their area and what they want, they don't want to see. And I thought it was very interesting to go through just the North Fork exhibit last night and then see the responses to the types of uses that people want to see and don't want to see. It very much matched the questions that were in the slides too, as far as like where the things they want to be allowed and the things they don't want to be allowed. But I think those posters are going to speak very loudly at the end of this effort and they're going to very much separate the planning areas. Because I know what we heard in the North Fork is not going to be the same as what we hear in Clark versus Howell. We're going to see different answers. So it's going to be interesting to go over the part of it.
Well, I thought you made a comment early on when we talked about, when you talked about using the clickers, you know, and, and real-time results. There was one question asked and I don't even remember what it was and it doesn't matter now, but it came out fifty fifty. You know, don't do anything and do a lot. And we're like, okay, you know, now where are we going? But anyway, it was interesting to see. And I think there were a lot of people in the room that that was an eye opener for them. That there's a lot of their neighbors that don't feel the same way that they do. I mean, not, most of the questions were pretty much, everybody was close, but there were one or two that were off. So that was interesting and it was neat to see the real-time results.
Yeah, yeah. It was surprising. So. And I think, you know, there may be instances where we, we simply do not have clarity and we, we bring back some options. And that's what we're asking the community about for the draft. So it doesn't mean that the draft is going to have clarity on every single issue.
Anything else come to mind? No. Appreciate the work. We'll see a lot of you in the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you expecting anyone, Terry, expecting anyone for the NWC discussion?
No. Well, yes, Lisa said she might. Let me. Let me just call her and find out. Because if she's not, then we'll do it out of it. And I don't know, did you all get a copy of that yet?
Recording stopped.
Nine last night.
Oh. Emailed to us live.
Well, Mallory, but I'm not sure who all she sent it to. So let me find out. Well, Mallory, but I'm not sure who all she sent it to, so let me find out. Okay, um since we're moving through our agenda fairly quickly, we're going to move up to um Ben McDonald, Park County Engineer, Public Works Department, um open bids for used bridge girders. We received two, is that correct?
All right. So, yeah, so we have the, this is the old Bowman Bridge from Ishawah. Old girders. First one. Alan Graver. Anybody know Alan?
No, he's sharp with that though.
Got some use finally. All right. So Mr. Graver, so as you guys know, there's eight girders, and so we kind of set it up to where there was three different options. Um so two bridge girder sections or four, so he has submitted a bid for option two, which is four bridge girder sections to make two single lane bridges. And his, he is proposing um or has bid seven hundred and fifty dollars per girder section or three thousand for four girders.
We have eight.
We have eight. So that would be half.
This guy only wants four, which is a done deal.
Well, I was just thinking, I was trying to think real fast, we'll see what.
Are there outer ones and inner ones? Are there any difference between any of them?
Yeah, so the, so four of them have the curb. And then four of them don't, so um the exterior ones have that precast curb on them.
Are you saying curb?
C U R B, yeah, like it, yeah, yep. Okay, the second one is from Jim Nicholson, Nicholson Dirt Contracting. And um this could be kind of, so option one, he actually filled out two sections at twenty six hundred dollar per girder section for fifty two hundred, and then he also filled in option two where he would purchase four sections at eighteen seventy five for seventy five hundred dollars. And then he also filled out option three where he would give thirteen hundred dollars for eight sections, which would be a grand total of ten thousand four hundred. So my recommendation would be to let me take this back and just run all of these scenarios and then come back to our recommendation. So apparently, you know, um yeah, this is a little.
We'd make five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars more if we split them for them for as long as the people were satisfied with the as long as one didn't want more of the curb girders, one with the curb.
Yeah, we'd make
Or for seventy five.
A hundred dollars more than we would.
Five hundred, a hundred dollars, yeah.
Yep.
So.
I'm sure, real quick, so in your opinion and Brian's opinion, we will never ever have reuse.
Ah, you know, the county, the original plan was to potentially use them, have B L M, but there just hasn't been any movement there, and so with the the need and all the stuff going on, we just thought it'd be good to get them, get them out from underneath our hair, but I, we would never use them to actually do a new bridge, no.
Madam Chair, that, no, I could easily see these being used i- if they were more mobile. The problem is it costs to to move them from one place to another. I had one person who was very interested, they contacted me and I put him in touch with them, and they didn't even turn in a bid because they found out it was going to cost them fifty grand just to move them.
There you go.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and and I kind of assumed that we would have, you know, Jim has quite a bit of equipment, and I don't, I don't know who this other guy is, but we've been kind of making sure that anybody that is has interest notes and crane costs, it's going to be the the issue. They're pre-tensioned, so you have to let them.
Yeah, and I was gonna, and curious, in that you uh the bid packet or whatever it is, as is, and if till they break them lift and um
Yep.
Because I mean, I I didn't realize there were that, and it's not saying it couldn't be done, but you could actually tail roll them on a big gym truck, maybe.
You could maybe, yep.
Do we have a uh a timeline for removal if once a bid is accepted?
Um, once, once we accept, we'll work it out with them. I think we kind of talked about potentially like up to a year, but we would really like them gone, so that's kind of a, we don't have a set set in stone. Um, you know, we were kind of assuming that seasonal, the seasonal aspect of it is, you know, if you, you're going to have to, what, if you're going to install them, you're going to want to move, have it raised one time. So if you buy them right now and you're not ready to place them, you're probably going to.
I just guess it would concern me a little bit if we don't have specific language on upon acceptance of a bid that we wind up with them sitting there, they own them, we can't ask them to remove them.
Understood, yep.
So.
And if something happens to them while they're sitting there in our yard.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not responsible for.
Yep. We can definitely give them each a call and see what their plans are and try and set that up, but I'm just happy that we actually had bits, because, you know, in all honesty, like that, that moving cost is.
Yeah.
But they they they're, they're good products, so.
Yeah, so do you want to come back to this in like thirty minutes or so, or do you want in two weeks, what's?
Um, but why don't you just, yeah, two weeks?
Because we're done, it's the last thing.
Uh, no, um, we could probably come back in like an hour, I'll take this order, would that work, or?
It's an hour, we won't.
No, you'd be done, okay, how about next week?
You know.
Oh, yeah.
Be next week. That's why I said two weeks.
Okay, how about half an hour then?
Okay.
Let's go with your plan.
All right.
Half hour seems like a lot, a lot short.
And as you contact them, I would say no more than a year.
Yeah.
They have to be removed, it's less time better, but don't get reached.
Yeah.
Minimum of a year. Because I understood, yeah, you could, most likely anybody buys them right now, they're going to need to leave, they may not be able to get them put in before preseason.
Yeah.
Right.
Where we're planning, so they need to lease next spring.
Yeah, that's kind of where we want to give them a little bit of leeway, because if you have a crinket bow in, yeah, come pick them up.
I guess, where I, I just don't want to get in the situation where they got it, got them at a hell of a deal, and they just figure maybe a project's going to come up where I need them, but in the meantime, I can just store them at the county yard.
For one year.
Yeah, I would, I would, one year.
Yeah, I wouldn't go more than a year.
With, unless, unless there's the agreement between both parties.
Okay.
For for longer.
Well, let me uh go crunch this with Brian, and then I'll be back in half an hour, what time is it right now?
Thank you, it's.
Sounds good.
Ten oh seven.
Ten oh seven.
Somewhere in there.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So again, in in moving forward with the agenda, we're going to go up to um reviewing the lease agreement with Northwest College, and I know Lisa's online with us.
Hi, everyone.
College, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
I have Dennis Cohen here is with me as well, our Director of Physical Plan.
Okay, appreciate that. Sorry this got to you fairly late yesterday, uh to say the least, but um I guess there's a couple of things we need to talk about. The idea, of course, is that N W C will use the commercial kitchen at Hart Mountain Hall on the fairgrounds for eighteen months presumably, starting January first of two thousand twenty-three for food service for the college while their new student center is constructed. Um, we've talked about this a few times, we've kind of talked about uh the county not looking at making money on this situation, it's just covering our costs and making sure that if our equipment is used, that that's covered in the future also. So Lisa and I've had a couple of conversations and we talked about the possibility because there's only one meter or uh City of Powell utilities at the fairgrounds. We're not positive what kind of a change that this may make in the utilities. So we talked about putting in a an escalation clause if we need to due to utility fee changes, which of course we get that bill once a month and and can be disseminated by the county as to what the utility bills have been in the past and and where it's at now. And I think that clause got in there. But what we need to come up with from the county commissioners and with Lisa's agreement is what kind of a base rental fee do we want to put in there? Knowing then that we may change that or escalate it a little bit if utilities warranted. Lisa, is that what you understood?
Yeah, primarily Dossie.
Okay. What are the thoughts from the commissioners at this time?
Interior as far as cost?
Yes.
Um, without an idea, that's a tough one, without an idea of what it's, do we have any starting point?
When I talked to Steve yesterday and we looked at the original um bills from the fairgrounds over the last few months, we're, we're looking at probably around twenty five hundred to three thousand um that covers the utilities that are being used there now, and that's all. So.
For the entire fairground.
Fairgrounds, yes.
That's, yeah, that's still pretty open-ended.
There's no way to tie it down until we see what their use does to the bill. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, the other question is uh of far as dollars in here is this charity deposit.
Right.
Um, do we want to request that?
No. And we can put zero on that line, she just said that's normal in a, in a in a lease agreement like this, it would be normal, but it would be my recommendation that we don't require one.
So, Madam Chair, my question, Lisa, um is that within your realm to start out like at a two thousand dollar a month? To make sure the covers or is it thousand, what works for you, we want to I I want to work whatever works best for you. We did, like you said earlier, we just want to make sure that uh the taxpayers, it it doesn't foot the bill on this as long as we're breaking even. And utilities is the big question, so um we don't know what those are, we know that it may be somewhere around two thousand, if it ends up being less, we can lower too.
Right.
So just a point of clarification, if I may, Commissioner Till, um are we talking about the college paying um a hundred percent of the utilities regardless of the utilization of the fairgrounds uh in general, or you're asking if we, uh let's say we set it at two thousand dollars, I I'm just picking it up. Um, anything over two thousand dollars the college would pay for? Um, I will tell you, we're kind of in the a similar boat to you in the sense that we have limited utility uh city meters on our campus, but we have building meters, so we we can gauge what our utilization is in our individual buildings. Um, so I could, we could go back and do a little analysis and give you a rough estimate of what it costs to run the entire DeWitt Student Center building, and that would at least give us an idea. Um, but I just want to ask that point of clarification.
Um, Madam Chair, my my impression is we will look like, say, the month of November last year. Well, depending what you move in, once you move in this in this, whenever that is, what, how much did it increase over last year? And is there, you know, uh either a gas consumption or electrical wattage change in in price? We'll have to figure that as well, but it would just be in the additional rate versus previous years.
Certainly, sure, and I I understand that, that makes sense. Um, I think that seems reasonable to to me, and I think we can also look at our utilization so that um if for some reason we ran into trouble during the time because there's a leak or something like that or something, I'll use water, for example, um because sometimes things can happen with water. Then we'll have a sense of what's going on, but I think that incremental incremental usage makes sense, absolutely.
That is something that the um the billing department said that they could work with in looking at the utilities for, you know, in that comparison mode, but we're not expecting you to to pay whatever the bill comes in at because there is other uses in that hall, so we'll be just looking at the difference from last year.
Okay.
I wonder if we're settling on two?
But we need a starting point, my question, I guess, Madam Chair, is is what is a reasonable starting point? We can go up or down from that, but it would uh I think at least a thousand, just, I can't imagine the the usage being a whole lot less than that, it could be more, but would that be, so we can get through this and get it done.
Right.
Is that agreeable to the college?
Yes, certainly.
Madam Chair, so we're, we're, we're just talking about utilities, it's not also a loss of income from other rangers coming in. Uh, we're just dealing with the utilities and.
Right, most of the the kitchen is only, last year was only rented four times. Normally, they rent Hart Mountain Hall, which is still going to be available for all of the types of things that it's been, without the kitchen. There is another kitchen on the fairgrounds in the other building that is usable, that they can warm things and bring things across, so we're not going to lose much rental thing there. Um, Lisa's aware that there is one weekend that was previously booked, which is a Powell graduation weekend, and N W C has said they will work with us to allow that to happen or whatever those people decide they need, which was talking about warming or doing things there, but N W C's been good in those conversations about that weekend, they'll work it out. But other than that, it's just a kitchen and that shouldn't affect our rentals very much.
It also you'll, we'll be setting precedent too for the rental of our kitchen at this price as well, so. Um, or anybody else. This is, you know.
An exception.
This is the ordinary type of plan.
Yes.
Yep.
Lord, you're recommending a thousand bucks a month.
Yeah.
Make them up.
Madam Chair, I move to move into the agreement as written with a thousand dollar a month rental base for to recover utilities and a zero dollar under security deposit guarantees.
Okay, and allow the chair to sign.
And allow the chair to sign.
Okay.
Amendment second.
Amendment, okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move forward with the lease agreement with um N W C for uh beginning thing of a thousand dollars a month recovery of utilities and a zero security deposit.
Madam Chair, I just want to um not really, doesn't have to go into motion, just to know that that is on a uh a basis that we will watch the cost and it may go up or down based on actual, and those are open books, anytime you can, college, I think, wants to look at them for comparison as well.
Sure.
But just get it close to at least cover the cost.
Uh, one, one other quick question. Are we going to reevaluate on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, or how are we going to do this?
Um we can do it either way, according to Steve, it would be, it would always be, you know, the previous month that we're looking at, and then we would let the college know, but we can do it monthly or quarterly, I don't know, Lisa, do you have a preference on how that works?
Um, I don't, I guess I think I would leave it up to the folks that might do that work for what is easiest for them. I mean, obviously, we know some of the cost of utilities have increased, so we probably want to look at a more current utility bill, you know, prior month, but then also keep in mind utilization of other groups to figure that out. And then I think looking back historically at some of our utilization, we can always apply a new, a more current rate to get a uh an estimate that would be more in line with what seems reasonable, so I think, however, I mean, we can, we can make it work, I'm sure, at the college to whatever would please the commissioners.
Um, one other point of discussion before we finalize the motion is that there is a clause in here that talks about the equipment. And Lisa and I've had that conversation also, if there's a piece of equipment that goes down or whatever, the college is going to work with that, similar to the lease that we had with partners, you know, as far as those kinds of things, and we all, we all know things can happen with the equipment. And they may move some of theirs in and put ours in storage, it just kind of depends on what they're comfortable with as what they work with.
That would, that would be nice, I mean, they're going to put more wear on there on that equipment in a year and a half than it'd be in eight or 10 years.
That's probably true.
Right, I, we understand that, commissioners, if I, if I may add, I would say just for the lease agreement in general, I'm not sure how the commissioners have stepped through that, um obviously, as uh Commissioner Overfield said, that this is the first time we're kind of seeing it, and so there are some devil in the details behind that, that I think we still just want to talk through the dates and stuff like that are still a little variable. Um, and so I wasn't sure if we were actually trying to prove the lease today as much as give um Commissioner Overfield or whoever would be uh working on finalizing this. Working on finalizing this authority to do that. Is that the goal today?
We can go either way. I know you didn't see this till last night. We do have a motion on the floor as far as the cost. That doesn't mean we have to approve the final agreement, I guess. But I know that you had a, a time crunch also with your. Bidding processes so that you knew what your costs were going to be as you and agreed to your construction costs, so. I don't know what your timeframe is.
And I'm grateful, Commissioners, for the ability to talk a little bit about the cost to, today, to, you know, to be completely frank. That, that's exciting for me. I just think having an opportunity to let our lawyers read through it would be. Just advantageous and clarify any questions we might have. Just make sure that we've got dates, you know. Settled in terms. Our, our last supper, as I like to say, it will be the end, middle to the end of December, but of course. Depending on the utilization of the hall and the kitchen, which I don't have that schedule in front of me, nor do I know if you do as a group. We might love to have the opportunity to move our stuff in a little bit earlier because we want to get out of our building. So just that finalizing of some of those details, that was what I was thinking about right now.
So Madam Chair, I guess we'd, we'd have to revisit that, or would it be your understanding that you just approved the lease or you just approved?
Madam Chair, I, my, I would like my motion to stand as, as stated, and we signed, you signed with your. With chairman to sign, and if there is a problem with it, it's not final until Lisa signs it. And so if that, at that time she sees something you don't want to sign, then come back to us and we'll rewrite it, but at least let's get it done.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Here, one of, the question I had is pretty well answered under the second paragraph of number six, building services. And if the price utility goes up considerably from what it was the year before, we have today to notify them.
There's some notification clause. I think we also put the dates in as, as. I think there's a clause or a sentence there about the dates that we can shift those a little bit, Lisa, if we need to, because I told them that was the original plan, but we're dealing with the construction, so. Okay. Okay. Then from the sounds of things, if this motion goes through, then. You and I will finish working on this as soon as your people have a chance to finish with it.
That sounds wonderful. I, I am truly grateful to the Commissioners for their willingness to support the college. For this project, it's getting very exciting and it's about to get real. So keep your fingers crossed, please, for us as the bids come in, that things. We don't have too many surprises. The design is good. It's just up to the industry and cost right now, I think, is where we're at, so. We'll know more in the next couple of weeks and we, I would. You know, I, like I said, I'm grateful for the opportunity to, to utilize the fairgrounds to keep our students fed.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Motion is a thousand dollars a month, then with the caveat of recovering. Utilities if necessary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're just waiting on bridge girders.
So does, what kind of garbage service do they have? Is that keel? At the fairgrounds?
Yes, we'll be back to looking at results from the bridge girder bids.
Okay, so we did talk to both bidders. Mr. Nicholson, he can get his. Basically, he said October to November of this year. And Mr. Graver is. Basically, probably June of twenty-three by then, and it was that exact scenario where he has to get stuff prepped and stuff. So really, probably our recommendation would be to accept. Mr. Nicholson's bid of eight sections of thirteen hundred. His price is. Better per section than even option two on Mr. Graver. Basically, the county. If we split it up for more, it would be a hundred dollar game, but we would basically have. Higher cost or a higher price per girder and a better time of getting them out of there, so. That's our recommendation is to go with option three Nicholson bird contract.
Madam Chair, I'm going to be right on the thing. Second.
We moved and seconded to approve the recommendation from Public Works for option three.
Sure. It's appropriate at that time. So just, I heard the question about can the county, would we ever use them? Actually, I think Joe would ask that, Mr. Tilson. They, they're older. It was my both names. But it's really, if we were to use them on something, if we're going to replace. It, like you said, Lloyd, I think half of the move around would be for something temporary. I, I think they're better set because they're in okay shape, but for like a private, private road, private bridge, not any standards. We wouldn't use something that's, what are they, forty, fifty years old? You know, to put back on a new bridge like that. So they, they just really wouldn't have any use to us, and like Lloyd said, they're hard to move around for temporary. So there's that. And, yeah, the deal with Nicholson before you guys vote too, they. You know, it, it's having everything together. He's got projects right now, ready to, ready to go where he could use them. Yeah. Well, I think that's the right move.
And not, I don't know that it would really be a deal, be a deal, but are both these Wyoming, Park County?
Yeah, so I'm.
I know Nicholson is.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think that the, the one person, Mr. Graver is part of that. Community out on Willwood. Is coming in.
Most likely Park County.
Yeah. So I, I believe that they would both be part of the county business.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
What are you going back, go on?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So how, how, how big a one are you looking for? I mean, obviously, it's bigger.
Yeah. I'm kind of trying to be picky because we know.
That is true. But I mean, that's a very.
Like, I already met my goal, like, the boy had to get one, so he's. He's out now. We got a decent six by six.
McDonald's telling, congratulations.
You got to suck it up and have some bad weather and. Good, good, so.
That's all, all part of it. We were all packing up.
That's a warning.
Truck and normally just pack a little can of fill. And we would walk down to one place and we spent about an hour on it.
All those in favor of a drink?
And anyway, we didn't kill them. We can't.